I advise here. Meeting, call the order please. Please join me in the prayers. Dear God, today as this session opens, we pray that your presence will be before us and everyone who serves in the decision-making process of our city. We pray for directions which will lead our city to be strong and unified. May we continue the legacy of our founders. May we be granted this day the wisdom to make decisions which will be for the good of our city. We also pray for your special blessings on all those who are working to transform our city and make it a better place to live and work. Amen. Please join me in allegiance to the flag. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic on which it stands, one nation, America, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Mr. Clerk, roll call please.
Counselor New.
Here.
Counsel Robinson.
Here.
Counsel Rourke.
Here.
Counsel Scott.
Here.
Counsel Yem.
Here.
Mayor Chow.
Here.
Counsel Drinkwater.
Here.
Counsel Getchea.
Here.
Counsel Janess.
Here.
Counsel Leahy.
Here.
Counsel Mercia.
Here.
Eleven present.
Any memorials? No memorials, we now go to the mayor's business. Two point one, communication, remote Zoom participation. Motion to accept and place on file by Counsel Janess, second by Counsel Leahy. Motion passes. I do just have a couple of announcements which is not on the agenda, something very, very simple. First, I want to thank the interim chief, Barry Goldner, and Lieutenant Fay for providing police escort service to the Calamata, the delegation from Calamata, Greece to visit our city. We thank the police department for their service. Second, in the audience right now, very to, very happy to announce the winners of the soup competition during this year's Winter Fest Festival. And as I mentioned earlier in the mayor's reception room, this was one of the best Winter Fest event that I've been to, and what made it so special was the soup competition. And I'm so happy that I did not have to be the judge because from what I've heard and what I tasted, all the food was just fabulous. But competition as it is, we do have how winners, and there were two categories to be judged. One was the judges' award. The judges were Jessica Wilson, Andrew Nazaro, Belinda Duran, and Chef Kelly. And also the people's choice, what we call the popular vote. So not surprisingly, the winners of the judges' awards also won the people's choice award. So here with us in the audience, if you could step to the podium, there were three, but there are three winners who are here today. The judges' award first place winner was Penella Restaurant. And third place Sahel Restaurant. And the people's choice was UMass Lowell Inn and Conference Center. And I just want to invite the counselors, please come up and take a picture with us.
Hit you the wrong place, yeah.
Next, we will go to three, city clerk, three point one, minutes of city council meeting, April 26th, for acceptance. Motion to accept and place on file by Counsel Rourke, second by Counsel Scott, second by Counsel-
They were done very well, I might add.
Motion passes. We had a long meeting last week, so we're making up for it this week. So we'll start with section four, with the unfinished business. Four point one is the informational, the all public listening flyer, informational, GFOA budget award. Motion to accept and place on file by Counsel Leahy, second by Counsel Janess. Motion passes. Four point two, vote authorize city manager into, enter into license agreement with Lala Books, where full readings and second reading by title. Vote authorizing the city manager to enter into a license agreement with Laura Lamar Anderson of Lala Books LLC to encroach upon the city floor property at 189 Margaret Street Lowell. Motion to adopt by Counsel Nune, second by Counsel Mercia. Roll call please.
Counsel New.
Yes.
Counsel Robinson.
Yes.
Counsel Rourke.
Yes.
Counsel Scott.
Yes.
Counsel Yem.
Yes.
I'm Mayor Chow. Counsel Drinkwater.
Yes.
Counsel Getchea.
Yes.
Counsel Janess.
Yes.
Counsel Leahy.
Yes.
Counsel Mercia.
Yes.
That's eleven years.
Mr. Mayor.
Counsel Mercia.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Could I just suspend the rules for a point of information and one comment before we begin?
Absolutely, Counsel.
Do I need a second?
Second by Counsel Nune.
Thank you so much. First off, I want to thank our interim city manager, Michael Gary, for the great job that he did. There's no doubt about it, I got quite a bit done. Thank you, Mr. Interim City Manager, thank you. And secondly, being here all these years, we used to at least have agendas, maybe three, four, not that many, but they were at the corner of this building, like in this room on the chair. It would be too hard to get a copy of the agenda. People come in and they'd like to look at it. I wanted to get one for a person that's here today, and I didn't get one. So I don't know whose job that is, but it's a matter of a few seconds to put some copies there, maybe two, three, something like that. If we don't use them, at least it's there to offer for the public. Thank you so much, thank you.
Sure, that's a good idea, Mr. Clerk.
Counsel, I'll make sure that, as you indicated, those copies will be at the door.
Thank you.
No other comment, we'll go to four point three, claims to property damages. Motion to refer to law department for report and recommendation by Counsel Robinson, second by Counsel Yem. Motion passes. We now go to the motions from the previous week. We start with four point four.
Mr. Mayor.
Counsel Janess.
I'd like to make a motion that we bundle four point four and four point two four. They're basically the same motion.
Motion by Counsel Janess to bundle four point four and four point twenty-four.
Second.
Second by Counsel Mercia. Motion four point four, Counsel Getchea, request city manager have the proper department repair the brick sidewalk outside Tremonte on the Palmer Street side for the outside seating area. Motion four point twenty-four, Counsel Leahy, Counsel Janess, request city manager have DPW look into sidewalk condition on Palmer Street in front of Tremonte Restaurant and come back with plan to fix and repair the sidewalk. Any comments? Counsel Leahy?
Yeah, thank you. Through you to the manager, could we just find out what they're going to do and how they're going to work with the restaurant to make sure that it gets fixed? It'd be nice if we could, if they could partner together with the city and we could get it fixed once and for all, instead of doing a temporary fix. Let's see if it needs to be pulled up and reset and then it's done for a number of years, you know? So if we could just get some information on, maybe on how they're going to fix it. Thank you.
Any other comments? No other comments, Counsel Getchea?
Thank you, Mayor Chow. Through you to the manager, I guess this is more about, they have dining, outside dining over there, and the bricks are offset, and they have waitresses and waiters who go out to serve food and patrons, and it's something that's an immediate need. It's not something that's more of a want, but it's more of a need because of the tripping hazard with all of the outside dining, and with summer coming on, it's something that they're looking forward to having done as soon as possible. So if anything can be done as soon as possible, I agree with Counsel Leahy that it needs to be looked at. Thank you.
Any other comment? Hear none, all in favor say aye, opposed say no, the ayes have it, motion is carry. We now go to four point five, Counsel Getchea, Counsel Robinson, request city manager set up a tour of La Laje Park and the National Park for the city council. Any comment? Hear none, all in favor say aye, opposed say no, the ayes have it, motion is carry. Four point six, Counsel Robinson, request city manager have proper department install a stop sign at the intersection of Christian Avenue and Methuen Street, second by Counsel Nune.
Mr. Mayor, can I bundle four point six, four point seven, four point eight?
Motion by Counsel Robinson, the motion, second by Counsel Rourke. Let me read the, so four point six, four point seven.
Four point eight.
Four point eight, I just read four point six, four point seven. Counsel Robinson, request city manager have proper department look at installing a four-way stop at Red Street and Fifth Street intersection. Four point eight, Counsel Robinson, request city manager have proper department look into changing traffic pattern for side streets of, off of Bridge Street from two-way to one-way. That was second by Counsel Nune. Any comment, Counsel Robinson?
Just on four point eight, proper department looking into changing traffic pattern for side street off of Bridge. What's going on down there is traffic coming, say, from Drake it into the city, four o'clock on with summer coming. They're seeing the traffic start to back up, say, past West Sixth, and so cars are jumping down the very small side streets that are already crowded, hitting forty, fifty mile an hour sometimes to try to beat that whole rush of traffic going into, from basically Wood Brother Flowers down to the Bridge Street Bridge. So it might be something worth taking a look, especially with summer coming and so many kids in the area. Thank you.
Any other comments? Hear none, all in favor say aye, opposed say no, the ayes have it, motion is carry. I like the momentum of this, any more motion to bundle? I should not have asked Counsel Yem.
If I may, Mr. Mayor, eight point three and eight point four, if you could, we could bundle that when it time comes.
Eight point three and eight point four?
Yes, please. Yes.
Let me just, let me just circle it, when we get there, we'll do that, eight point three and eight point four. Okay, Counsel Yem, when we get there, we'll bundle these two motions, these two items. Four point, we now go to four point nine, Counsel Robinson, request city manager have proper department look into installation of additional lighting along First Street, second by Counsel Drinkwater. Any comment, Counsel Robinson?
Again, I don't know if I should bundle four point nine, four point ten. That was during the cleanup on First Street, and these are items that were identified while we were over there working on the First Street area.
Okay, motion by Counsel Robinson to bundle four point nine, four point ten, second by Counsel Drinkwater. Let me just read four point ten. Counsel Robinson, request city manager have proper department provide a plan to remove widow makers that work along First Street. Second by Counsel Drinkwater, again, go ahead Counsel Robinson.
So the lighting comes from, during the cleanup, we found a ton of syringes in a certain stretch around, in the area of about 112 First Street. In addition to, we found about four hundred, a box of about four hundred Live Ronze ammunition stashed over there as well. And having conversations with the neighbors in that area, they said, there's a stretch over there that's very dark at night, and it kind of invites some of the negative stuff from society into that area. So I think additional lighting, the poles are already there, be great. And then the deadwood is simply, from years of storms or whatever, you have a couple good pieces hanging up in the trees that potentially could injure somebody. Thank you.
I hear no other comments, all in favor say aye, opposed say no, the ayes have it, motion is carry. Motion four point eleven, Counsel Robinson, request city manager have proper department provide a report on what services our animal control department provide, including how stray animals are handled, and if the department head feels as if they are adequately staffed. Second by Counsel Mercia. Any comment, Counsel Robinson?
This motion is, quite a few constituents have reached out, unsure as the process, what to do with stray animals, stray dogs, stray cats that they find. And again, fourth, fifth largest city in the state, I know when I was employed by the city, we only had maybe two animal control offices at the time. I don't know if that's adequate enough, I don't know the volume of calls, I mean, and that's why I was looking for an update as to what is the proper protocol, and who does the public identify or reach out to when they're dealing with stray animals and different things along this nature, as well as how many current animal control employees do we have? And is that adequate enough to provide coverage for the city, pretty much 24/7 with that job? Thank you.
Great motion, great questions. Hear no other comments, all in favor say aye, opposed say no, the ayes have it, motion is carry. Motion four point twelve, Counsel Nune, request city manager have proper department install a stop sign at the intersection of Columbia and Wright Streets, second by Counsel Robinson. Counsel Nune?
The motions speak for themselves.
Thank you, Counsel, all in favor say aye, opposed say no, the ayes have it. Motion is carry. Motion four point thirteen, Counsel Nune, request city manager have the proper department investigate the possibility of renovating the Lowell District Court for the Lowell Police Department, second by Counsel Rourke. Counsel Nune?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'm not sure if anything's going to come out of this, but would like to see if there's a feasibility study to see, because the D-CAM, if we interested, will be, we the first person they will give to. So the cost associated with the possible of renovation, probably a lot of money, maybe we can get the state to help, if possible. A police department need a new home. The home that they add now is not, you know, a well suit for them, and the cost that we put into repair every now and then is just, it's not, it's a bandage situation, we want to find a home for a police department. This may not be the location, but just to look into it. Thank you.
Counsel Leahy?
Thank you. I called on the trash around the herd street you're talking about, Counsel New? Yeah, so I heard that that's going on the auction block in June, if I'm correct. So, but even the possibility of, if someone were interested in knocking it down and building us a police station, that should be part of the discussion, and then we could rent it back to own, something like what we did with the senior center. So we don't have a lot of time, but could be a possibility. Thank you.
Any other comment? Hear none, all in favor say aye, opposed say no, the ayes have it, the motion is carry. Motion four point fourteen, Counsel Nune, request city manager provide an update regarding the hiring of traffic engineers, second by Counsel Getchea. Counsel Nune?
Oh my God, you know, when's the last time we have a traffic engineer? I say about a year ago, and you know, this council and the previous council, I would say at least a hundred, if not more, of motions related to traffic. We need to find traffic engineer, and we need to have, we have to look at how we pay in comparison to other city and town. We need to find them, because, you know, this is get out of control, I mean, because of all these motions, you know, each of these councils, especially the neighborhood council, right? You know, they file at least, each week, at least a couple, you add them up, a lot. So we leave this until, say, three months or four months from now, can be more, and the traffic issue is not going to solve anytime soon. So that's why I filed it, I know other council filed it before as well. So I hope we can, with the new managers, new managers can, you know, you know, reach out to somebody and help find a new traffic engineer soon.
Counsel Getchea?
This is a very good motion, and my thought process is that we put in a motion to have the manager reach out to UMass Lowell and look for internships for this. When I was at UMass Lowell, they were always looking for internships, and I think that if we build that relationship or using more of those resources for internships over to the city side, that we could build a career path for a lot of young students out of there, and have today's technology right at the forefront. UMass Lowell is one of the best traffic engineering schools in the country. So I think that we have it right in our backyard. I think that we have to start these conversations back and forth with UMass Lowell in hopes that we could use some of their resources, the young students, and bring them out and try to get them into our workforce, and try to keep them into the city. So I think UMass Lowell would be a great partner in trying to do exactly what Counsel Nune is stating, because we can't find help, but we'll also stay on the cutting edge by trying to get these internships. The town of Lexington used a stream team, which they used them to go out from UMass Lowell as an internship. They've won national recognition for that, and there's students from UMass Lowell that are out there doing that work for basically pennies on the dollar. So I just think that there is resources here that we, we may be available to us. Thank you.
Counsel Rourke?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. You know, this probably goes towards eight point nine on the agenda as well. You know, I saw the posting, actually today, and going by human resources, it's listed from ninety-five to one oh four, the starting salary. I believe that's been the case now for maybe eighteen months. Do we foresee any adjustment in increase in the salary range for it, you know, knowing that it's been vacant for, you know, extended period of time?
Mr. Manager?
Thank you very much, Mr. Mayor, and through you. Counsel, that's something that we have discussed, I was talking with CFO and also folks over at DPD, having that discussion, it's a, it's a real, live discussion, and it's something that actually we just discussed today, so.
It's more of a citywide, obviously, issue as well, right?
And the discussion that Counsel Getchea was talking about as well is also something that was, you know, briefed upon today, but that is definitely something that we have, we're looking at to consider.
I know it'll come later in the meeting as well, but I just figured, you know, my guess is that's probably the main reason why the position hasn't been filled as of yet, so.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Counsel Robinson?
Thank you. I believe Counsel Getchea had a motion on the floor to reach out to you Lowell to see if this, I'm not sure of the wording, maybe Counsel Getchea would, I'd like to second that motion.
Okay, I apologize, that went by fast, motion on the floor by Counsel Getchea, second by Counsel Robinson.
Correct. On that motion, I would just like to add, if the vacant traffic engineer position is a union position, the administration sits down with the union, and maybe we may look at, is that something that we might want to discuss, potentially changing or whatever? Because again, if it is a union position and we're bringing in interns and volunteers to do the job while the position sits vacant, it could be potential trouble. So I would just like to say, could you bring in the union for the discussion and see if, what direction's going to work? Because again, it's desperately needed, and I think it's a great idea to start utilizing what we have in our backyard. Thank you.
Right, if Mr. Clerk couldn't make note of that, to bring the union up to be part of the meeting at that time. Any other comments? Hear none, all in favor say aye, opposed say no, the ayes have it, motion is carry. Four point fifteen, Counsel Rourke, Counsel Scott, request city manager have the DPD present the council with an OFP for the lease and or sale of La Laje Park. Any comment, Counsel, Counsel Rourke?
Thank you. You know, the motion was filed, you know, with the idea of looking for options for the city. You know, I think first of all, to establish whether or not La Laje is an asset or liability. I know Counsel Getchea and I were there over the weekend, and to say that, you know, it's not in the greatest condition is probably, you know, a nice way of putting it. But again, you know, as a city council, you know, we want to be held hostage by any situation. We need to do what's best for our residents and for the taxpayer, so I think it's, you know, due upon us to see what is out there, to see what interest is out there for the, for the parcel. I believe in talking to the CFO, we're somewhere around a million dollars in debt service remaining on La Laje Park, so, you know, once again, looking at as many options that are available, you know, we work on behalf of the residents and the taxpayer of the city, and you know, others that may be interested in it, don't do that. So I'm hoping that, you know, maybe we could, so, Mr. Manager, we can go into executive session to talk about what our options are without, you know, hurting our position with the ballpark. Thank you.
Counsel Scott?
Thank you. I would just echo Counsel Rourke's sentiments. I mean, the intention of the motion was really to start a discussion around what the options are for this property. We have not heard all the options on the property, and I just think it's really in our interest to look to see what can be done with it that is the best use, that is best for the taxpayers in the city. Thank you.
Counsel Getchea?
Thank you, Mayor Chow. I've read a lot into this in the last week between the grant agreements. UMass Lowell has been an amazing partner with the city of Lowell in both the arena and also in the ballpark, and when you read into it, and the state also put up eight million out of the ten million that it cost at the time. So they have a strong partnership, and at the time, the city of Lowell had also put into the agreement that they would maintain it, they would put money in capital funds, they would, they would follow through. There were, there were very flush years over at that field that they didn't pay down the debt. There's a lot of interest from UMass Lowell, and I just think that I'd like to make a motion, request the manager reach out and invite UMass Lowell to next week's city council meeting to go into executive session to discuss the future of La Laje Park. I think it's fair. When we looked at it and we just look at how much the investment is, we really haven't heard anything go back and forth on negotiation piece, and I just think that it's fear to our partnership with the university to see exactly where they stand on these issues. Where do all these agreements lie? And I would ask Counsel Rourke if he would be okay with that type- And, and I would ask Councilor Rook if he would be okay with, with that type of motion? Because I, I do think that his RFP and Councilor Scott's RFP is an amazing thing to do. Because we have to start a process if we don't have another option. And we don't want to have a sole bidder. The state is the one who does that for everybody. They say procurement wise, you should always have more than one option. And, and I think this is, is the smart thing to put out there. But I think the conversation should go for the city to UMass Lowell first and see what we can come up with as a council in a city to try to, you know, see where, where they stand on this issue. So I, I would put that in a form of a motion and hopefully I get support from the council.
That sounds very similar to Councilor Rook's explanation at the end. Sounds more like a request to the make of the motion, to amend the motion. Would you be willing to amend that motion to have the city manager reach out to President Maury Meehan to invite him to come over to have the executive session meeting first, or?
Well, if, if the motion is about options for the city. And again, you know, as the council, we don't work for the university. We work for the residents of, of the city. You know, Mr. Manager, if you want to reach out to the university to see what, what, any type of offer they want to put forward to the city, you know, I would, I would agree with that. But, but again, you know, to lock us in just to one thing, I think is doing the city harm. So, you know, I would, I'm, I'm fine with reaching out to, you know, to, to the university to see, you know, what they want to maybe offer the city as well. But, you know, the, the motion was filed, again, at the be, test of the, of the residents of the city that are on the hook for this. You know, if an offer comes in from anybody, you know, university included, that sticks us with a bill.
Councilor Mosier.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I would love to go into executive session and start the process as to what are our options. But I think a previous motion before was to go to tour La Laje Park and just see what, how much we would be needed to put into the ballpark. I don't want to go into executive session not knowing that firsthand. And I don't know that I want to go in and tour unless there's someone knowledgeable that can point out the different things. I mean, I could go over there today after this meeting and I, I won't be able to tell you what needs to be done. I don't know. So we could all go over there. Is there someone gonna be there to show us this has fallen apart, this is about three thousand, this is ten thousand, this is? I would like to see that before I go into executive session to discuss what people are gonna tell me, that I have to take their word for it? I want to hear this first, then, so there's like an order of sequences before I get into exec? I don't think it's a bad idea, but I'd like to know what I'm up against before I go in there. I don't want to buy the car unless I take it for a ride and know if there any damage here, what's going on. That's my opinion. Thank you.
Councilor Robinson and then Councilor Drinkwater.
Thank you. I think executive session might be a good move because I've been hearing a lot of information, legal opinions bouncing around as far as even what we can and can't do as a council or as a city with this parcel. So I, I'd appreciate some information before we move on, on this stuff because we go out with an RFP and can we, can't we, is, all this stuff is still up in the air. And so I, I really appreciate, like, if we could go into executive session at some point and get this information in advance before we proceed with any of these motions, really. Thank you.
Councilor Drinkwater.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. And if I've been hearing the, the discussion clearly, it sounds like the makers of the motion, as well as Councilor Gishia, who suggested inviting UMass to the executive session, seem to be on the same page. And I agree with what's been said. I think it, it makes sense to refer the motion into an executive session to discuss the, the potential parameters of what an RFP process may look like. But I also want to add that I've been very encouraged by the discussions that have been ongoing between the, the city council, the city and UMass relative to the, the future of La Laje Park. So while I think there, there are other things that we may want to discuss relative to the motion that's on the floor, I do think it's important to continue the discussions that have been ongoing between the parties and UMass relative to the, to the future of the park. I think it's been encouraging. I certainly, I think it's a good thing to, to keep all options on the table, but I want to make sure those conversations continue as well. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Councilor Noonan.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Thank you. It's good to get a discussion going. You know, I hear from both sides and I think choose that the university has been a good partner to the city. I know that we want to put together, ask DPD to prepare the RFP either for sale or for lease. We also, just this afternoon, maybe around four o'clock, we got a, an opinion from the city solicitor with regard to that ballpark. That, you know, the RFP, whether sell or, or lease, we have no, we have to get approval from the Governor, Secretary of Administrative and Finance. Okay? My take of it is that if we have a private developer to come in and want to buy it, I don't think the Governor's Secretaries of Administrative and Finance go on to sign off on it. If they do not, then, you know, the partners remain waiting and willing to work with us. So I think, yes, having discussion is a good thing. By the end of the day, that discussion that Councilor Gishia is talking about, the manager's probably already had engaged in conversation on this matter because it's up in the air for the last week or so already discussion as to what to do with this. We have to do something. Do nothing is not an option. You know, you would leave it a year or two from now, the deferred making, not five to seven. And I think the university is willing to do their share, you know, maybe this year. They, they take it, if they wait it until the next two years or so, that deferred making is going to be double, if not triple. The city cannot afford to do anything with that park, really, because of all the costs of deferred making. The idea of going to have discussion on it is a good thing. It's a good thing for the city. I hope that we will work with the, the partners and continue to build on that relationship. Thank you.
Councilor Scott.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. So the email that you, that Councilor Noonan referenced earlier today, that was not my understanding of the email. So I would just like to have the city solicitor possibly weigh in, just to make sure that I read it correctly. Thank you.
Madam Solicitor.
Sure. The, that's correct. So the, the email, and these are things that we can discuss further in executive session. But there's certainly a question, I, I think, that, that remains as to what the older legislation and what the agreements between the parties actually specified. And, and whether there is a, an agreement that applies to the arena, but not to the ballpark, and whether these agreements were, were recorded as they were intended. So there's, there's issues, but I think that those discussions, particularly if the council is going into executive session anyway for consideration of the RFP, then it makes sense to really bundle all of those discussions and, and have them in there. And, and I think as also Mercy or pointed out, you know, whatever information the university has, you know, will be welcomed to review as well here. And that should also be part of this process.
Councilor Rook. Are you done, Councilor Scott?
I agree.
Councilor Gishia. Any, any more comments? Are you done?
I do. Through you to the manager. Have you seen any of the current lease agreements with UMass? The one that was dated 2017?
Mr. Manager.
Through you to the mayor. No, I have not. But we are pulling that paperwork together with legal as well.
Okay. I guess through you to the city solicitor. With, within the 2017 agreement that's there, it states that UMass Lowell is entitled to the facility for spring and fall games and practices. Do they provide the city with a schedule of those dates and times that they have scheduled out? Do you know?
I believe that, that they have in, in the past provided the city with, with schedules and even moving forward, that they, there were discussions about the university providing schedules so that if there was another tenant, there was no conflict in a schedule. So I, I don't believe that that's been a, a problem in the past as the university partners with the city in the use of the ballpark.
So, so within that agreement, it, it states that the city has the right to schedule other events outside of that. Is that your interpretation of that also?
Yes, my recollection is that the city would have an opportunity to schedule other events, which is part of, also part of the reason why having a schedule as to when the facility was being used is important.
Okay, so, so my point is this, is that I was at the park on Sunday, much like Councilor Rook was. And I think that a lot of people on this council would love to see city kids on that field, playing on that field. That field was able to be played on by the University of Massachusetts Lowell. The bathrooms are better than the ones in City Hall. I promise you that. The concession stand was open. I would ask that we would start utilizing that field because if we're gonna get into these discussions, there's a lot of legalities that are gonna go back and forth. That field is already set, two years dormant. You can tell by looking at the grass, it's dormant. You can tell there wasn't fertilized correctly. You could tell that the irrigation wasn't run right. You can see that the field needs to be used. And why not start using it by our kids in this city? Whether it's high school quarterfinal tournaments for the north, the south, whatever we need to do. But let's start looking at other avenues of revenue because we're not getting anything out of it right now. And we haven't for the last two years. And if we're gonna sit in executive session and spin our tires on things that we don't really have a clear picture of, and the UMass system has a nice law department and they have a nice building authority, that they're gonna sit in and say, this is our understanding of it. And the city's gonna have a different take on the understanding of it. And we're gonna sit here and battle back and forth, like the Hatfields and McCoys, over a field that the best interest of the city is get rid of its debt and pass it on to someone who's gonna beautify it and it's gonna be used by people that may want to go to UMass Lowell in the end, UMass Lowell, others. The city can't afford this big scheme of the Red Sox. It's not gonna happen, not on our watch. We're not gonna be able to afford it. So there's a lot of moving pieces. And when we talk about RFPs, RFPs are, they take time, you know, just to go out to bid. And you understand that. They take time just to dial in the information, to dial in the language. The only option this city has right now, without a lengthy period of time, is to get into conversation with UMass Lowell. I know no one wants to hear that because there's other options out there. Maybe there's more money on the table, maybe there's more things. But I just think that in the benefit of, of the residents of the city and the benefit of the kids in the city who have never had an opportunity to play on that and we watched people march up here from senior league to senior league and tell us they would love to get on that field, we have it already in a document that says we can actually rent it out, we can schedule it in. So why are we not doing that, would be my question. But again, I, I just think that, and I agree with everybody who has a take on that there's more to this, there's residents' money. I, I don't disagree. I think the RFP process is a good thing. But I just think that there are solid agreements that even when the final ruling comes from the Lowell, City of Lowell Law Department, there's gonna be a question to that agreement by the state who provided the funding to this source. Thank you.
One, one last comment by Councilor Rook, then we'll just make a decision on, on your motion, Councilor Rook.
Yeah, the idea of having, you know, city kids or tournaments there, sounds like a motion in itself, which I would, you know, happily, you know, vote for or second. You know, but the reason why it says that the city can, you know, rent it and for other reasons is because the city owns it. Plain and simple. So look forward to the executive session. And hopefully by then, Mr. Manager, by the time we get to it, you'll have some more definite answers for us. And if we, you know, not to our liking, we can continue the RFP process. Thank you.
No, go ahead.
Councilor Noonan, just going to second, or the Councilor?
So I was just gonna ask, so the motion right now is what, that, that with this?
The motion right now is four point fifteen, which is to have the DPD present to council with an RFP for the lease and/or sales of La Laje Park. From what I'm hearing is by, from Councilor Gishia and Councilor Drinkwater. And Councilor Rook just agreed to, to refer this to the executive session first, which I agree, given that really the city manager's first day in a meeting probably need some time just to catch up on the previous discussion with President Maury Meehan. And I think it's a good idea to take this first, Councilor Rook, thank you for agreeing to that, to go to the executive session. But I would like to take into account Councilor Mosier's suggestions. Maybe we cannot do like in one week to go into the executive session next week. Maybe we can schedule for a tour of the La Laje Park first. Sometimes this week, this weekend or next week, then afterward, we'll schedule the executive session. That doesn't need to be a, a motion, Councilor, but we'll get this motion, refer this to the executive session. And then once we, after we have the tour, we'll call the executive session. And with that said, I don't thi, I think we are in agreement. Councilor Drinkwater, you have something else to say?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Just a point of clarification on the motion that we're voting on. We, we voting on the amended motion to revert, refer the motion to executive session and invite UMass to provide an update on the future of the, the park?
That, that's correct. And, Mr. Clerk, if you could just clarify, I believe that you have changed your intention to the motion to refer to the executive session and inviting the president, UMass, to come.
So, Mr. Matt, you know, I, I hope, I would hope the city manager and the solicitor and the DPD talked to the, the university about it, right? I don't see why they should be part of the executive session. I mean, this is about the council talking about the different options we have available going forward. You know, the last time we had the university for executive session, the whole world knew about it the next morning. So, you know, I, I would hope that the manager goes forward in speaking to the university. And then, you know, can come back to us with, with an update, you know, best case scenario, you know, an, an offer maybe. But if not, you know, again, we work on behalf of the taxpayers of the city, not on behalf, you know, of, of another Commonwealth agency. Thank you.
I think on the same page, you agree to that, Councilor Drinkwater. I think just for the manager to speak with the president of UMass Lowell and then invite him to come to the executive session. And I would imagine that Mr. Manager can, you know, all the head of departments report to him anyway. I don't see a problem with the manager speaking to the head of department to, to catch up. So for, for a week on the job here, so I don't see any problem with that.
Yeah, I would just, and I think I would clarify too. I don't think there was ever an intention, I don't want to put any words in Councilor Gishia's mouth, who made the suggestion, that it had to be the UMass president that was here. I, I do think it would make sense for someone from UMass to be available. Not, doesn't have to be present for the entire executive session. That wouldn't be my suggestion. But I think it would be beneficial just to have, because of the nature of the discussion and the ongoing conversations that have been happening between the city and UMass on this subject matter, to at least have somebody from UMass available to discuss the, the current state of situation. I mean, it's been a little while since our last executive session. I don't think the council has been updated specifically from, from UMass. I, I just think there could be relevant information that could be provided by, by UMass, you know, pertaining to the discussion on a potential RFP. So my suggestion, and others may, you know, have different thoughts, my suggestion would not be to have someone from UMass participating for the entire discussion in the executive session, but I do think it would be beneficial to have somebody available.
Mr. Mayor, that's cool.
Councilor Rook agrees with that. Councilor Yam?
My thought is that, that the executive session right after the tour is for the city council to hash it out, to find our own way of how we handle this. So then, we can then invite, you know, someone from the university. So the last time, we did not have an opportunity to discuss among ourselves. So this time, after the field, the field trip, then we discuss, including the RFP and everything. So, so that, that's what I thought the motion would be. And then we can invite UMass Lowell representative come at a later time. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Okay. I think with the, the make of the motion, agrees to the amendment to discuss it in the executive session after the, the fact finding by Mr. Manager with UMass, whether it's the, the president or someone would be available. I think we don't need to do a roll call. We could do a voice vote. All in favor of the I, opposed, say no, the I's have it. Motion is carry.
Mr. Mayor, if I could suspend the rule and take motion eight point five, our order, please.
Motion by Councilor Noonan to take motion eight point five, move up the agenda, seconded by Councilor Robinson. Motion 8.5, Counselor Nune, Counselor Yam, request city council recognize April 17th as Cambodian Genocide Remembrance Day. Any, we have registered speaker?
We, we do, Mister Mayor. Dr. Baravan Eng.
Clerk, Dr. Eng just stepped outside, he'd be back shortly, maybe call the next person, sir.
Dominic Lei.
Dominic Lei, 363 Walker Street. I was asked to come and speak to support this motion, and I'm glad to oblige. So, I want to speak, I wanted to speak to support this motion, why April 17 is significant in history to the Cambodian people at the end of the Vietnam War, back on April 17, 1975, when the communist, back in Cambodia, took over Cambodia. It was the day that they started to kill the Cambodian people, and it later on known as the Killing Field of Cambodia. So every survivor knows the significance of this date. I think it is appropriate to recognize this day as the Cambodian Genocide Day, and I'm asking the city council to vote to support this motion. Thank you.
All right, so Thea Chimron.
Hi, good evening, good, good evening, Mayor, city councillors, city manager. When I saw this motion, 8.5, that was put out by Counselor Yam and Counselor Nune, I was very pleased, as Mister Lei mentioned, this is a very sad and important day in the history of, of Cambodia, of our Khmer people. I myself was a survivor of the Killing Fields. I remember vividly on this day, back when I was about nine years old, for the first time seeing dead bodies laying around on the street when they were forcing us out of, from the city to the countryside. So, and given that the City of Lowell is, you know, we keep saying we're the second largest Cambodian population, I say we're the first of many things, first of mayor, first of, so it's very appropriate that on this day, on April 17, that Lowell recognize this as a genocide remembrance day for Khmer community. Thank you very much.
Dr. Baravan Eng.
Thank you, Mister, Mister Mayor. Thank you, City Lowell, City of Lowell council members. Thank you for allowing me to speak. I'll, I'll keep it very brief. I'd like to thank Counselor Nune for taking the initiative to file this motion, and for Counselor Yam for co-sponsoring. April 17 marks the day that the Khmer Rouge communists took over the capital Phnom Penh in 1975. All inhabitants, 3 million people, were forced to leave a gunpoint. In the following four years, over 2 million people died from mass starvation and mass On that morning in April, my father woke me and my two sisters and told us that we must leave now. It is no longer safe to stay. A foreign embassy has just left the country. On the night that the capital city fell, my two sisters and I walked to a provincial airport at 2 o'clock in the morning in complete darkness and escaped to Thailand. I only learned four years later that my father, my aunts, my uncles, my cousins, and 87 members of my family died. Declaring this remembrance day is just a small way we can honor and remember the millions of lives that were lost. There were many Cambodian soldiers who fought alongside the US military. The next generation must learn their history, not let it be rewritten, and not let it, and not let it repeat again in another land. Thank you.
Any other speaker, Mister Clerk?
No.
Counselor Yam or Counselor Nune, any comments?
Thank you, Mister Mayor. Want to thank the speaker, school committee man, Dominic Lei, CMA director, Satir Chim Rom, and Dr. Bob Eng for speaking. I didn't tell people that I filed this motion, they just, some just learned a bit, we could just fill this room. That day marked a very dark day for a lot of us who were survivors of the Khmer Rouge. I know the councillors read the Mercias, and then Mayor, former Mayor Mercias, and Counselor Mercia, and Mayor Ronnie Elliott, and also visit the museum. April 17, 1975, that's when the Khmer Rouge seized control of Cambodia. That's the beginning of Cambodian genocide, one of the greatest human tragedy, in which, like Dr. Bob said, almost 2 million Cambodian were killed through starvation, killing, mass killing and all that. I was 15, I lost three siblings and an uncle, just like you, Mister Mayor, you lost your fathers and so many others. That's the day throughout, through, throughout that, 1979, after 79, that's when we trying to get out of Cambodia, because, you know, that's a great opportunity for us to get out there. It's a sad day. It's a day that, you know, that we Cambodian American, we want young people to remember that day, that dark day, so that, you know, they be part of something that will not repeat itself. So I, I thought that, you know, I know that April 17 coincides with Cambodian New Year, which has happened in Cambodian New Years, a third day of Cambodian New Years. You know, on the one hand, we celebrate the New Year, but the other, we remembering, remembering those who lost their life. So I, this is an easy motion, really, for my colleague to support. Does not matter where we at, this is a kind of, you know, things that we do not want to repeat itself, whether here or anywhere in this world. So I thank you for listening, Mister Mayor.
Any other comment? Counselor Yam?
Just a quick comment, and I just want to thanks my colleagues and ask for your support. I too, my father was in the armies, was sent to the front line, similar to Ukraine, they sent to protect the capital, but I think his unit was overrun, so I have never seen him since. So I too, lost members of the family, so this is very important for a lot of Cambodian, not just in the City of Lowell, but throughout the Commonwealth and throughout the country. Again, the City of Lowell is the city of first, so we want to be the first city to recognize April 17, 1975 as a genocide day. So I thank you, my colleagues, and Mister Mayor, thank you for your support of the motion.
I want to thank you, thank both councillors for co-signing this motion. I thank all the speakers who come to speak tonight. This day is a very important day. It's a day to remember. It's not a day to celebrate, even though it is with the Cambodian New Year, as Counselor Nune mentioned, but as with many celebration with the Cambodian people, the Cambodian diaspora around the world, every happiness, every celebration is also with sadness and with bitterness because of the, the recent history. So I think it's fitting to have this day of remembrance with the celebration of the Cambodian New Year. We can look, we can remember the horrific past that won't repeat again, but we can also celebrate the future. Here are no other comments. We'll do a voice vote on favor of the aye, oppose, say no, the ayes have it, the motion is carry.
Mister Mayor?
Counselor Janess?
Can I make a motion to suspend the rules to take 8.13 out of order, as I believe we have a registered speaker?
8.13?
Yes.
Okay. Motion by Counselor Janess, second by Counselor Gishia, to move 8.13 out of order. Motion 8.13, Counselor Janess, request city manager evaluate the feasibility of creating a centralized communications department to improve information flow, second by Counselor Leahy. We have a registered speaker, Mister Clerk?
We do. Vayazum Bobby Tobiag, Tagbielli.
This is Bobby Tobielli of 33 Middle Street, Lowell, and I was calling to speak in support of this motion by Counselor Janess. I think that this is a much-needed resource for the city, increasing and improving communication and access between local government and the community will greatly benefit Lowell. Creation of communications department has been discussed for many years, and I think that now is a good time to make this happen in a new administration, and I'm definitely optimistic that we can make it happen. So I just wanted to support this motion and thank Counselor Janess for filing this much-needed motion. Thank you.
No other registered speaker, Mister Clerk?
No.
Okay. Counselor Janess, any comment?
Thank you, Mister Mayor. Through you to the manager. I hear again and again, talking to residents, businesses, everyone, that communication needs to be better from the city, and this is, this cuts across all aspects of the city government, and which is why I thought that having this discussion would be important. My thought is that this communications department could centralize things like social media, website content, mailings, other outreach to communities, to the community about upcoming meetings or events going on, et cetera, et cetera, as well as provide an opportunity for city employees to have the resources they need to be able to effectively communicate with the communities, whether that's translation of documents into various languages that are needed throughout the city, availability of an interpretation line, so if there's an interaction where somebody needs that kind of live translation to be able to communicate with a, with a community member, they have one number to call. It also gives the opportunity for, for the community to have a single point of contact inbound to the city. Think of it like a switchboard, whether it's an actual telephone or electronically, one point of contact for them to reach out if they have an issue or need assistance with something and don't necessarily know who to call. Communications department might be a good central location for that. Other things I've thought that could, could land in a department like this are on the marketing branding side of things, just kind of making sure the city's got a consistent design language and consistent look and feel to communications. I think that would go a long way to making those city communications be instantly recognizable as official communications from the city, as opposed to look, having to look at something and be like, is this real? Just that level of, of professional touch, to make everything look, look and feel similar goes a long way towards that. So this was something that you and I talked about, Mister Manager, and I just wanted to bring it forward to start this conversation. Thank you very much.
Counselor Yam?
Thank you, Mister Mayor. Along the line of the informational, I've heard the signage issue is also important. So people say, I got to Lowell, now I want to get back to Lowell Connectors, but I don't see a really good signage to direct me back to where I started it. Also, in addition to that, street signs, you know, say, I'm on this street, but I don't see the, the street's name, only the street across with the sign on. And people make fun of me because they from California, they have sign all over the place, and I say, yep, that's the beauty of living in New England, you have to know where you're going, so. Thank you, Mister Mayor.
Thank you, Counselor. No other comments on the favor of the aye, oppose, say no, the ayes have it, motion Any other motion to bundle or move any item up the agenda? If not, we'll go back to where we left off. Motion 4.16, Counselor Scott, request city manager have appropriate department provide a report about the parking placard policy for residents' homes. The report should include what is needed to apply for one, where they are allowed in the city, instructions for their placement, and how they are enforced, second by Counselor Rook. Counselor Scott?
Thank you, Mister Mayor. This is actually one of the things that I hear a lot from residents about in my district. There's questions about, you know, if you can have parking plackets, even if you have, you know, an eight-car driveway, like, do you have to park in front of the placard if you park, you know, if you have the sign out front? A lot of them are placed really close, right next to the crosswalk, so they're asking whether or not anyone approves them ahead of time, like, do they bring in a picture that shows where they're going to place it and get instructions on where it can be on the, you know, on it, because you can't park against the crosswalk. There's expired signs that I guess they don't pay anymore for, I guess you have to renew them, that's my understanding, but they don't renew them, and then the signs are just there and nobody enforces it. So there's a lot of different questions, and then the last one is just, you know, they've called to have cars towed that do park in front of it, and they tell them they can't tow the car. So they're asking who's supposed to enforce it. So if we could just get an idea of some of the, you know, the way the process works so that I can relay it back, that would, that would be really helpful. Thank you.
Counselor Leahy?
Thank you. Just quickly, yeah, we, we should probably just review that policy, because some people do get them, and they, there's really no need for them, but they put them in there more to block people from parking in front of their house, which is not the, the intent of the, the use of these. So, yeah, if we could have someone review that and get back to us on it, that'd be great.
Counselor Rook?
Thank you, Mister Mayor. And only because I've done this numerous times with residents of Pataqueville, especially East Pataqueville, I've just directed people to contact Terry Ryan, the parking director. It's a simple email, they do a site visit, and if they qualify for a placard, it's $10. The city makes it and delivers it to the, to the home, so. But, you know, a report on it, explaining it would be good, but done it maybe a half dozen times over the past year, and it's pretty, pretty simple to do.
Here are no other comments on the favor of the aye, oppose, say no, the ayes have it, motion is carry. Motion 4.17, Counselor Scott, request city manager have appropriate department report on pedestrian and traffic improvements to be implemented in conjunction with the pending opening of the new Home Depot Distribution Center on Woburn Street in Tewksbury, second by Counselor Mercia.
Thank you, Mister Mayor. Actually, Counselor Nune's motion may have something to do with this as far as not having a traffic engineer. I actually did attend the planning board meetings in Tewksbury when this project was going in with Natasha, our former traffic engineer, and she got some concessions with the project, which included a flashing, flashing crossing walk at the Commonwealth Ave Playground, Duchamp Playground, and there was supposed to be some traffic improvements or a study around 495. And I don't know, Tewksbury right now is at the point, they have the signage up for the Home Depot, you know, to open, they have their flashing crosswalk up there, but we haven't done anything in Lowell, so it'd be nice just to get an update and find out what's going on with that. Thank you.
Any other comment? Counselor Yam?
Quick comment. Since Home, since Home Depot do that construction, would they also be paying for the flashing light as well, or do the, the city would have to pony up the money to put that?
Counselor Scott?
I can let the city manager, but I was actually at the meeting, so there was $100,000 allocated for that improvement to happen from the town of, not from Tewksbury, from the, the Home Depot project. They're supposed to release the check. I did speak to Tewksbury, they said the project was being signed off on and the check being released, so I just wanted to follow up and make sure that happens, so, thank you.
Okay. Any other comments? Here are none, on the favor of the aye, oppose, say no, the ayes have it, motion is carry. Motion 4.18, Counselor Scott, request city manager have proper department develop a plan to post dates and approximate times on the city website of any blasting activities that will happen within any neighborhoods, second by Counselor Gishia. Any comment, Counselor Scott? Any comment, Councilor Scott?
Thank you. Really, it doesn't have to be a post on the website, but I don't know whether or not they can, you know, blast a horn or something before they blast. Well, people, they got a permit last October, they started blasting then, they stopped for the winter, and then they started again in the spring. And the residents were really caught off guard, it just, all of a sudden, they started blasting, the house shook. There were people that were, that suffered from PTSD, that were, really, they were terrified of what was going on. They had no idea, they actually got in their car and they drove away. So, I mean, there's, there's a good reason to, you know, find some way that we let people know that they're starting again, even if it's just the beginning of, you know, the time period that they're going to start. Thank you.
Councilor Yam?
I spoke with Councilor Scott, there's a friend who lives on St. James, there's a blasting along behind their home off of St. James. And I mentioned to Councilor Scott, there, there should be a notice by the people who do the blasting to resident on this particular day, from what time to what time, you know, so. We have this particular family that I know have medical conditions, so the blast really bothers them a lot, bothers them a lot, so. And I'm sure others resident as well, so it would be a good idea to have a, a timeframe where you, when you can blast it from what time to what time. So, so that's, that's it, Mr. Manager, uh, Mr. Mayor, thank you.
Thank you, Councilor. Seeing no other hands, on favors the eye, opposed say no, the eyes have it, motions carry. Motion four point nineteen, Councilor Scott, request city manager have proper department look into installing a stop sign at the exit from the VA clinic at the corner of Cunningham and Marshall Roads, second by Councilor Noon, any comment, Councilor Scott?
Motion speaks for itself.
Thank you. On favors the eye, opposed say no, the eyes have it, motions carry. Motion four point twenty, Councilor Scott, request city manager have proper department remove the small pedestrian bridge on the pond on Park Avenue near the Pine Arts School, second by Councilor Janess. Any comment, Councilor Scott?
Yes, please. So a group of residents reached out to me concerned about animal abuse that was happening at the pond. There were turtle traps there, they reported there were, you know, a bloodied animal on the ground, I don't want to get into all the details, but they asked me to make this motion because they thought the pond needs some time to recover because there's like way less turtles than there ever was, and, you know, and I'm not an expert on habitats, I mean, so I don't know, we could refer this for a discussion to the environmental subcommittee. They've also talked about keeping the bridge there, but maybe making sure that there's more, you know, sets of eyes on the pond going out there. So, I mean, I'm open to discussion on it, but it's definitely something that, you know, a lot of people are concerned about. Thank you.
Just one moment, Councilor, you want to, Robinson, Councilor Scott, you referred it to which subcommittee?
Yeah, I'll refer, refer it to the environment and flooding subcommittee.
Second by Councilor Robinson, any other comment, Councilor Robinson?
Yeah, when I worked for the city, what we used to do is the front closest to the road used to be maintained, so it was visible, because it does overgrow and, and then it becomes kind of a hiding spot, and maybe it's just something to consider, keeping that front trimmed down so that way you have high visibility for, you know, police as well as the community. Thanks.
Councilor Scott?
Thanks, I would just thanks, thank you to Council Robinson for bringing that up. There was a gentleman for many years that was privately taking care of the pond, he would bring his riding mower on down there, like every, you know, week or whatever. And now it is like a hiding place, and they have, the picnic tables have been pulled out and they're in the water. There's cones in the water, there's trash in the water, so it's definitely, if there's something we can do, it would be, it would be good. Thank you.
Seeing no other, Councilor Robinson?
And, uh, Councilor Scott just brought up the picnic tables, again, in the past, we used to dig holes, cement them and lock them in because, again, the kids did pick them up, throw them in the water, but that place was maintained for a while. I believe the gentleman passed away since, and I don't know if anybody else has resumed responsibility at that area. Thank you.
Seeing no other hands, on favors the eye, opposed say no, the eyes have it, motions carry. Motion four point twenty-one, Councilor Scott, Council Robinson, request city manager report on the feasibility of developing an RFI for a municipal marketing program. The RFI should include the goal of identifying city-owned assets available for sponsorship and advertising to bring in new city revenues using a private-public partnership model. Any common counselors? Council Robinson?
So Councilor Scott and I discussed this, I've seen this implemented in other communities. Specifically, you'll see parking garages and, and we had the parking director appear before the council, and we were talking about how ours are unprotected in a lot of areas. Weather gets in, speeds up the, the aging process. Other communities will offer, like you see at the university, where they have the Riverhawks logo, it's like a fabric material, it's, it allows the wind through and all that, but I think with all the open spaces in our parking garages, it might be a, a, a great opportunity to offer those spaces to local businesses to get that material printed with their, their business logo to advertise that way and, and also generate some kind of revenue stream for the city. Another discussion we had during the parking discussion with the, the parking head of the parking was with the kiosks, potentially the ability to advertise some of small businesses, maybe even corporate sponsors on the kiosks, similar to what you see at like the mobile gas stations with the automated advertisements. So, again, we're just trying, we were having this discussion, we're trying to brainstorm and think of different kind of ideas to bring to the city, utilize existing space and offer some kind of revenue stream a, and make it somewhat affordable to local businesses. Thank you.
Councilor Scott?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Yes, we, Cory and I, I'm sorry, Council Robinson and I, were discussing how this could be a new revenue source for the city of Lowell. The closest city by us that seems to do it is Worcester. They have, they've partnered with the local, local marketing firm that handles the advertising on public buildings and other advertising opportunities, and they use a shared cost model, so there's no cost to the city, the, the marketing firm handles all of it, the, the process, the bid process, the awards, finding advertisers, the whole thing. So like I said, it would be a to, entirely new revenue source that could be used for, you know, some of our funding repairs that we need. I also looked, there were other big cities like Chicago, if you're trying to just find something to look at, to get ideas. They, they do it on all types of properties, street light poles, trash barrels, bus huts, city vehicle fleets, they had an entire list that they're using as a, a revenue source. So I'd appreciate your support. Thank you.
Councilor Rook?
Uh, thank you, Mr. Mayor. This motion's been filed before, it's a terrific motion, and, Mr. Manager, we just got it done. You know, for some reason or another, it's, hasn't been, you know, fulfilled or whatnot, but it's, it's a great idea. It's money that we're wasting every year by, by not going out and doing this. Any restrictions that are in place, I would hope that those could be overcome, but it really is, you know, just thousands, hundreds of thousands of dollars every year that the city's done getting out of it, so. Kudos to Council Robinson and Scott, but hopefully we just, just get it done, please. Thank you.
Seeing no other hands, on favors the eye, opposed say no, the eyes have it, motion is carry. Motion four point twenty-two, Councilor Mercier, request city manager have police patrol the area surrounding Gorham, Central and Charles Street, especially in the area of Jerry's Food Store and the Portuguese-American Monument, second by Councilor Noon, Councilor Mercier.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'm sure that my colleagues have heard this before, and they're probably saying, not again, but I think we have a problem in the city whereby there's a problem area, we send everybody there to quiet it down and clear it up and improve it and this and that, and then we forget about it. We assume that it's being taken care of and it's never going to happen again, when we should keep on top of things. And I don't know why or if they're patrolling that area. And the reason I bring this up yet again is because I received a call from a gentleman who represents the Portuguese-American veterans, the war veterans, and he asked for help with, with their four flag poles on the island off of Gorham Street across from Jerry's Food Store. The area was damaged by people who hang out and sleep there, so if they sleep there, I'm assuming they might be homeless. I don't have a problem with the homeless, and I don't care, really, I don't have a problem where they sleep, but when they throw their trash and desecrate the veterans' island by knocking down the flag poles and ripping apart our American flag and disrespect our veterans, the very people that fought for this country and risked their lives, I get annoyed and angry. I have no use for anyone who does that, whether they're homeless or not homeless. I want the people who are responsible for that destruction to vacate the area. In my opinion, they lost their right to be there, they're tearing the area over there apart. And I also want to interject and thank our acting city manager, Michael Gary, the fire chief and the firefighters from ladder three, who went to the site and helped the representatives from the Portuguese Blues Club and the veterans who took the ladder truck to hook up the device that hoisted the flags up the pole, because they had to put a, like a ball on top of the pole with the hoist on it. They broke every single one of them off. They took one of the poles and they literally broke it down where it was on the ground, and if you go there now, you'll see there's four flag poles, because they put one more up that was destroyed, but you'll see one that's broken in half, because that's, they have nothing better to do than to destroy. They all did a tremendous job, and the Portuguese-American neighbors in that area are most grateful. I also want to say that there is so much destruction to that neighborhood, which encompasses Gorham Street, Charles, Central, even the Portuguese Veterans Monument at the corner of Central and Charles, Charles Street, has trash, damage, feces, clothes, shoes, because homeless are sleeping there as well. There's no respect anymore, so I'm asking to put a stop in, in a moment to think about this question. And here's another question, if you, if your loved one, say your mother, your father, your grandparents lived at Bishop Markham, would you feel safe knowing that your loved one ran out of something and had to go to Jerry's Food Store across the street and be greeted by as many as twenty-five people lined up asking your loved one for money and risk getting robbed or assaulted? It's a gauntlet, they go through a gauntlet. I wouldn't want my loved one to have to go there. My answer is no, I would not feel comfortable letting my loved one face that gauntlet of possibilities of what could happen to them. Why are we putting good people in this situation? Now, I, now ask yourself this question, as a business owner who put everything they own into a corner food store, realizing that they have been overpowered by people hanging around deterring, deterring customers from coming in, losing business, would you want to stay here? I wouldn't. But we are allowing this scenario to continue, it's a mess there. I went to an event the other day when the flags got all put up, they actually had a memorial service. The Portuguese band, the Portuguese veterans, neighbors come out and they sang the Star Spangled Banner along with the band playing, because they respected that area so much. They had just put sod down all around, there was trash and food and clothes and, and they had just made it look so nice. It's enough to break your heart, and I'd like to stop it, I'd like to stop it, they're, they're under siege, I'm, I'm not kidding. Even the keep, a local restaurant that took over the Rook, Mr. Rook's trattoria there, Ricciato's trattoria, they got robbed, the people actually went in and picked the lock, ran out with the, with the cash register. This is what we're asking for? Now, you might say, oh my gosh, but we don't have any money for the police. Let me just tell you, not too long ago, before you were here, Mr. Manager, we talked about the three percent community impact fee from marijuana, and they listed eligible expenses, and one of the eligible expenses under F was increased police patrols. So I say, let's use a little bit of that three percent and get the police there to walk around a little bit more. I'm disgusted with it, I'm sad about it, because let me tell you about the back Central neighborhood area. Many years ago, when I was younger, before I was a city councillor, that back Central neighborhood area was a devastating place, nobody wanted to live there. And all of a sudden, this family bought this home, and they lived in the basement of it, and they fixed up the first floor and the second floor, and they got it magnificent. And another family came in and did the same thing. These were Portuguese people, Portuguese people that took a desolate area of the city and transformed it into something of beauty. They worked so hard and put their blood, sweat and tears in it, and they topped it all off with a half of a tub in their yard with the Blessed Mother in it. I mean, come on, it's just, and this is what we want to do for them today. Oh my God, they made this area a place of beauty, and now they're overrun by people, and I'm sorry that they're homeless, I, I'm sorry that they're sleeping outside, I'm sorry, but I don't appreciate the destruction that's going on. And I was at the Blues Club, and people were members there, and the women were saying to me, gee, I got in my car one night to come in here, we were going to play Biggo, and they had a dinner dance on Friday. The lady said, my mother and I wouldn't get out of the car, they were all over the place, intimidating people, and we left. I don't want to hear that, that's, that's sad. So if we can have ample amount of police presence in the area, right next to the Blues Club across the street, it's, the street going up is Chapel Street, it's S and S Auto, that business was there for years. They were at the back Central Neighborhood meeting, they wanted to close their business and move out. I don't want to hear that, I don't want to hear it. We're here to make the city vibrant and better, and I'm asking, please, let's, let's show people that, yeah, you could be poor, but you don't destroy property and don't intimidate people. That, I don't know if they have more rights than we do, I don't know. But I'm just passing this along, hoping we can get some answers, thank you.
Councilor Janess?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. First, thank you to Councilor Mercier for making this motion. This has been an ongoing battle for a couple of years now. I know last term, Councilor Mercier and I think Councilor Rook had a motion together about it, there was some focus on the area, it got a little better. And then, as time went on, the focus went away, and now the, the issue came back. Councilor Robinson and I had a motion a couple of months ago that got referred to the neighborhood subcommittee to try and restart this conversation. That hasn't happened yet, so just kind of want to poke on that and try to get that moving a little bit. This is something you hear from all the businesses and the residents in the area, it is an issue. It's a big issue, quality of life, safety. And we just need to put that focus back on, try to get this moving in the right direction and, and keep, keep an eye on it and, and make sure we can make it a more livable place for everyone down there, and a better situation for the business owners too, so, thanks again.
Councilor Noon?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Thank you, Councilor Mercier, for filing the motions. A lot of us was in back Central meeting not too long ago, I think it's five, six months ago, Councilor Drinkwater, Councilor Janess, Councilor Scott, Councilor Mercier and myself, back Central Neighborhood, they raised this issues, and they're saying this has been an ongoing, as Councilor Janess has indicated. I think it's important that we address the, the, the safety concerns and the, you know, of not just the resident, but also the business and the Portuguese-American Association that areas, and this is an ongoing, I know that police did, did work on it. I noted then, you know, former superintendent Kelly Richardson, you know, put a van, police van, they have cameras, and that deterred them for a while, but then again, they're gone, and now they're back there, so this is a bandaged situation. We need to stay on top of it, because this is a concern that been, you know, going on for some time, not just, I mean, unlike other area. This area has been an ongoing, as Councilor Janess indicated, over years now, almost two. Thank you, Councilor Mercier.
Councilor Robinson?
Thank you. Another thing some other cities have done, Worcester Springfield, some of the larger cities in the
the larger cities in the state. Have we reached out and had a conversation with Littlehausen about this? Because I know they're kind of smack dab in the middle of this with Bishop Markham. And other communities have basically offered up space to the police department or worked on kind of a partnership and had a couple patrols that, that came out of the housing that could kind of monitor. Maybe that's something, because I mean, that puts a fresh set of eyes directly across the street from the troubled area, and it also allows the patrolling officers to recharge when need be. So that might be something worth taking a look at as well. Thank you.
That's a good suggestion for Mr. Manager. Counselor Scott?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I was actually just going to mention, what Counselor Noon had already mentioned about the Subcommittee meeting that we, many of us attended. The, as Counselor Mercier mentioned, it was very troubling to hear from the business owners and what they've been through at that site. I don't know if I'd be able to stay there if you hear what they've gone through. And just this week, I've received multiple calls from residents in Back Central, a little further over, further to the Polish Civic Club, which is another block over from Charles, but they're also experiencing the same thing. So it's definitely an area that you just, we really need to increase the presence there. So, thank you.
Any other comment? Hearing none. I also want to thank Counselor Mercier for bringing up this motion again. It is a important area that I know that every time you bring it up, and other councillors bring it up as well, that the police did go out, tried to solve it for that period of time, and then they just recurred again. And in addition to your request on this motion, I, maybe Mr. Manager could also try to identify other areas as well, so that way, you know, try to solve this on a multi-faceted level, try to identify other areas, try to, you know, try to be proactive and make sure it doesn't become a problem like this area Counselor Mercier is talking about. Counselor Mercier, you want something else to say?
And, and I'd like to refer this motion to the Neighborhood Subcommittee, which there was a motion a while ago similar to this in that area. And if I could have the police that patrol that area or the sector commander to attend that meeting, to discuss some sort of strategy, what we could expect to lessen the people's burdens there.
Motion to refer this to the Neighborhood Subcommittee.
Yeah, and if there's a, if there's a, and if there's a way that we could meet next Tuesday at 5:30, if the city clerk, notice how I'm scheduling it right at the city council meeting?
I don't believe that date's open.
It's not open?
I don't think it is.
All right. Well, I'll call you tomorrow. Thank you.
Hearing no other comments. On favor of the I, opposed, say no, the I's have it. Motion is carried. We now go to motion 4.23. Counselor Leahy requests city manager report on status of filling potholes around the city floor. Second by Counselor Robinson. Counselor Leahy?
Thank you. Again, it's just the pothole season just never seems to end. And I know that the DPW is in transition again, so, but if we could just get an update on just numerous calls of main streets, and then the secondary streets, and then the streets into the neighborhoods. So it's just a never-ending problem, but seems like we should have been caught up by now, so if we could just find out. Thank you.
Counselor Getchia?
Thank you, Mayor Chow. Back a few months ago, we put in a motion asking for a report from engineering about how many roads they were going to do crack sailing in, preventive maintenance, crack sailing, fog sailing, cape sailing, how many miles that was going to be done. Now, preventive maintenance will prevent a lot of these things from happening. So I think that we just have to get better at that, and hopefully, we don't get many more motions about potholes. But, thank you.
Counselor Scott?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I just have a question. I'm not really sure who can answer right now, but my question is around the reporting system that we use, the city reporting system. You know, the people submit their pothole repairs, and I use it myself to submit them for people when they tell me that there's a pothole in front of their house. I'm just curious what reporting function that product has. Like, are we, you know, are we fixing them all according to when they've been reported? Are we kind of taking priority over who's calling, you know, go out there right now and fill potholes? I'm just curious if we're just using all the reporting functions that would be available to the city. Thank you.
Counselor, do you want Mr. Manager to answer now or through the motion response?
Motion response.
Thank you. I, I do think it's a good motion, Counselor Leahy, and we still have a lot of potholes throughout the city and also in the lower highlands, as well as many neighborhoods throughout the city. So I look forward to getting the motion response report on this one. Hearing no other comments. On favor of the I, opposed, say no, the I's have it. Motion is carried. We already did motion 4.24. Now we go to motion 4.25. Counselor Leahy and myself request city manager work with proper department for major cleanup throughout the city. Any comment, Counselor Leahy?
Sure. I know the Lowell litter crew has been doing a remarkable job over the last couple of years, but this is just a motion to, to look into. Mr. Manager, maybe we could have, like other cities, if we don't, you know, May 1st is cleanup day in Lowell, like a major cleanup day. And I had a motion on before about, you know, can we look at starting a anti-litter campaign again, or keep Lowell clean campaign, something like that. So something where we can make it more visible, you know, shame people who throw their cigarette butts out the window and think that's normal, you know, and just dropping their trash. So we need, we need to really speak up and, and just shame people who decide to throw their litter out. So, thank you.
Counselor Robinson?
Thank you. And thank you to the maker of the motion. I think it's a great motion. One of the things that I hear from residents a lot is, even with lots in, in kind of public-private areas throughout the neighborhoods, we have a cat trailer that's all hand tools, non-power. I've heard from quite a few residents that, especially some of the people in, like, say, Centerville, where they want to maintain the small area they have around their house, they don't even have a shed or a driveway. So they have nowhere to store a lawnmower or a power tool. Could we look into maybe putting together a cat trailer that would be available, you know, if a neighborhood requested it for a certain time? Maybe we send an employee over with the, the power tool trailer. Couple people use the lawnmower, get done what they need to do in their area, and back on the trailer, back to the DPW, wherever it comes from. Because that is something that some elderly and people without the space to store that kind of equipment have requested. In, in Centerville, and I'm sure if that was something the city looked into, there'd be plenty of other areas throughout the city that might help and spur people to try to care, you know. Thank you.
Counselor Yam?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. We received an email as councillor from a resident regarding the trash around the Songas Arena after the concert. So the, the comment is that the people that manage the Songas Arena should do a better job in cleaning after each event, the, the trash, and then the nip bottles all around the Songas Arena. So along with that motion, if I could add that to, to that of the Songas Arena after the event on concert. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Counselor Robinson?
Real quick, I forgot. This was, was sent to me also. Canals. Who has jurisdiction over the canalways and the cleanliness of the canals, for one, and the river cleanliness of the river? First off, the canals. Multiple pictures have been sent to me recently, all over the city. And I know there have been efforts to get people in the canals to help clean, but ultimately, who is responsible? And, and what, if it's not city responsibility, what can we do to try to nurture or encourage a routine cleaning of those areas? Thank you.
Mr. Manager?
Thank you very much, Mr. Mayor, and through you to the councillor. I had a meeting today with National Parks, and that was a very good question that you raised, because that's what we were talking about, myself, Congresswoman Trahan, and the new leaders of the National Parks. We're talking exactly about this. My hope is, within the coming month, and that might be a plural, we're going to figure that out. They have new leadership over there. They're trying to figure out how they can tackle this issue. We walked all throughout the downtown, spent probably a good hour and 15 minutes. So, very timely in the discussion, but it is something we've been, we talked about just today. So if you want to put that into a form of a motion, if I can ask that councillor, I'd gladly get your information back on that, or just talk to you when it's completed.
Okay. Can I put that into a form of a motion, please?
Motion by Counselor Robinson, second by Counselor Rourke.
I, I mean, another piece with that is, we got Folk Fest back this year, and so I think that that's going to be another vital component. Canals are a draw for all, many visitors during that time especially. And I think we have a lot of community members that'd be willing to volunteer and step up to work with National Parks to do regular cleanings of the canals. So I mean, all this stuff, if we could get that back in the report, greatly appreciated. Thank you.
Counselor Mercier?
I was under the impression that Anel owned the canals. And if Anel owns the canals, aren't they based out of Italy? And if they're not close by, I don't really think they're good neighbors to that degree. And the reason I say that is because didn't we, the city, purchase all the bridges so that we could repair them? And we did have help from UMass Lowell, and I think he was chancellor at the time, Marty Mann, because he gave us something like $20 million to help us, because a lot of those bridges went in to, crossed the buses that brought his students to the college. So I'm thinking that they own it. I wish that we could trespass on it with a boat and just take litter off it somehow, but I don't think they'd mind, because they don't really know. Who's going to squeal on us, right? So that's what I was under the impression. They're not really good landlords of the canals. I'm not sure, but that's what I'm hearing.
Sure. Maybe that would be part of the report coming back as well, Mr. Manager. Counselor Janess?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Through you to the manager. I know that the Lowell Canal Water Cleaners is a group that does a lot of these cleaning efforts on their own. It's a volunteer group. And I think, you know, they've put the sweat equity into this, and I think they should be involved in these discussions, because they can certainly help us make better canals. So they've, they've been doing this work, and I think that including them is a good move. If you need the contact info, I can certainly put you in touch.
Here are no other comments. I don't have a comment myself on this motion. I agree with all the councillors' comments. On favor of the I, opposed, say no, the I's have it. Motion is carried. Going to have a bit of a change of pace. We go, now go to five votes from the city manager. 5.1 vote, transfer 10,000 cemetery, wayfu reading, and second Vote to transfer funds to pay overtime for the cemetery department for the remainder of fiscal year. Motion to adopt by Counselor Drinkwater, second by Counselor Janess. Any comment? Roll call, please, Mr. Clerk.
Counselor Newen?
Yes.
Counselor Robinson?
Yes.
Counselor Rourke?
Yes.
Counselor Scott?
Yes.
Counselor Yam?
Yes.
Mayor Chow?
Yes.
Counselor Drinkwater?
Yes.
Counselor Getchia?
Yes.
Counselor Janess?
Yes.
Counselor Leahy?
He just stepped out.
Counselor Mercier?
Yes.
Teniers?
5.2 vote, transfer 30,000 DPW, wayfu reading, and second reading by title. Vote to transfer funds from solid waste and recycling to pay overtime for the parks and streets departments to improve the cleanliness of various city parks. Motion to adopt by Counselor Mercier, second by Counselor Yam. Any comment? Counselor Robinson?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'm in agreement with the 30,000 transfer. It's something necessary. We have the funds. And as we discussed, I think we need to look at scheduling. I think this will get us through to July. I think what we are spending on, and the limited amount of time that we are throwing, what, what little resources we have at this problem of trash pickup, I think I'm looking forward to increasing the amount of time applied towards that. And I get it. I mean, this is a necessity. I think it's in lieu of a failed contract that we had in place in the past, and hopefully, we can start getting more routine, regularly emptied receptacles throughout the city, because we're just starting ball season. We're just starting. Lacrosse is running. The nice weather's going to be here next week, 70 degrees plus, it seems like. So the kids are coming out, beautiful playgrounds installed, even in my neck of the woods at Hovey. And I mean, on any nice day, you have 100-plus kids visiting. The, the amount of trash in our public spaces is definitely double or triple what it was last year due to the pandemic. So again, if this money is going to go to combat that, I'm all for it. If we're throwing money into the wind, then there's a problem. Thank you.
Counselor Getchia?
Through you to the CFO, Connor Baldwin. Connor, on this account, it looks like there's going to be a large amount left at the end. You know, the, the original amount that was, the revised budget came out at 7.3 million. Year-to-date expenditure is 4.8 million, or 65% of that fund, with only about 13% left in the year. You've got May and June. The projection, you have encumbered $1.7 million, which is projected about $1 million out of that would be used. So there'd be roughly $780,000, $780,000 out of that, and another amount balance of 720. So that's about $1.6 million, it looks like, will be left over in this account at the end, if it follows a trend that's there. Why would we have to take money out of free cash to buy the new garbage truck? Why couldn't we have just taken it out of this account and bought the new trash truck out of there? Could that have been done, I guess, would be my question. And what is the, I guess, the plan is at the end of this, to roll all of that, those funds back into the free cash? I would take it.
Mr. Baldwin?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. To address your question, councillor, the projected balance of unencumbered funds in the solid waste and recycling is about 720,000 after this transfer. And so that is a function of a few things. The projection in the FY '22 budget was based on a higher contamination rate than what we've seen actually throughout the year. So DPW has informed us that the, the level of contamination is less than what was projected, and that's, that's one role as to why we're seeing a surplus. The surplus is available to supplement other areas of the budget. That's what we're, we're doing here. And to answer your question about why we didn't use this to purchase the truck, I don't know that we knew this was available earlier in the year, whereas that free cash was an available appropriation. You know, if this does close to the general fund balance, it will become a part of the free cash appropriation next year, but that, that's a function of the process, the free cash process, and, and end-of-year process.
When, when we register year-to-date actuals, is that up till May? That year-to-date actual that's in there?
It, it would have been as of the date of this memo, so the, the end of April.
So you have May and June left. Would you agree that that's 65%? That number, the 4.8 is 65% of the 7.3 million that was revised budget? Or roughly there? Because if it is, and you've got encumbrances of 25% of that same number, there's going to be $700,000 left over in that 1.7 that's in encumbrances. I don't, and add that to the ending balance, that's what comes to the total.
I believe that encumbrance will be fully liquidated.
Well, there's 25% there, and there's only 13% of the year left. So I, I just, my question would be more or less, so basically, you're going to replenish the, the free cash with the amount left over in this account?
As a function of the end of year, whatever is left over will become part of next year's free cash. Thank you.
Counselor Janess?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Through you to the CFO. Just a question about the reference trash truck. Have we received that yet? And if not, what's the timeline on that? Thank you.
Mr. Baldwin?
I don't know exactly. I know that in communicating with the DP, interim DPW commissioner, I know it is imminent, the taking receipt of the truck. I, I can't say whether we, we have taken delivery of it, excuse me, but that's something we can follow up with at the next meeting with the council. We can take a look.
Anything else, Counselor Janess?
No, just thank you. My, my memory was that it was due sometime in May-ish, so I just wanted to check. Thank you.
Counselor Robinson?
Also in this memo, if we're going to be receiving delivery of this truck... Also in this memo, if we're going to be receiving delivery of this truck, there's two positions as well, I believe, that's tied in with the truck. Could we start looking at maybe anticipated vacancies or something to kind of get the process started with those two positions? Just because, I mean, if we're in trouble now staffing-wise and then you're bringing on a truck, two trucks potentially, two positions already tied to the truck, like, shouldn't we start at least going fishing and see if we're getting any nibbles? Thanks.
No other, Mr. Baldwin, you want to respond now?
As it states, thank you, Counselor, for the question. The plan from DPW is to include those positions in next year's budget. They're not in the '22 budget. And so to get us through, it would be a 7-1 appropriation for those additional two positions pending approval by the council in the budget process, which we will be in quite soon. But to get us through to that point, that is what this transfer is for. So that, but the funding for those positions has not been appropriated yet.
So we're going to take receipt of a new truck? Don't have the staff to staff the new truck? And we're already paying four hours a night in overtime currently without this new truck? Now you're talking two trucks running with no additional staff to help out? Is this a realistic number to get us through till the end of July? Or beginning of July, I should say.
Mr. Baldwin.
This is DPW's proposal for that. So the commissioner is not here to respond, but we can follow up with the commissioner. It is my understanding and discussions with him that this is, this will be sufficient.
Thank you.
No other comments? Mr. Clerk, roll call, please.
Counselor Newn.
Yes.
Counselor Robinson.
Yes.
Counselor Rourke.
Yes.
Counselor Scott.
Yes.
Counselor Yem.
Yes.
Mitch Al.
Yes.
Counselor Drinkwater.
Yes.
Counselor Getchea.
Yes.
Counselor Janes.
Yes.
Counselor Leahy.
Yes.
Counselor Mercia.
Yes.
11 yeas.
Another change up, reports of the subcommittee, 6.1 Finance Subcommittee joined with School Finance Subcommittee, May 3, 2022. Any comment, any report, Counselor Scott?
Sorry, if I could report out at the next meeting.
Okay, wonderful, thank you. Counselor Rourke.
If I could, schedule a transportation subcommittee meeting for next Tuesday at 5:30.
Okay, wonderful. So we'll table this report for next week. Counselor Scott. We'll now go to seven petitions. 7.1 miscellaneous, Charles Cofaces requests installation of a handicap parking sign in front of 141 Mount Verdant Street. Motion to refer to law department for report and recommendation by Counselor Mercia, second by Counselor Janes. On favor of the I, opposed say no, the I's have it, motion is carry. We're back to eight, the city council motions, and we're doing pretty good on time. Hopefully, we can have the momentum and move fast, Counselor Getchea. And funny enough, it starts with you. 8.1, Counselor Getchea requests city manager have human resources provide all new employees with entire W4 forms and an explanation of the tax deduction process at time of hire, second by Counselor Drinkwater. Any comment, Counselor Getchea?
I do have one. You know, back in 2020, the IRS changed the W4 forms. And back in 2020, the tables got changed because of the administration, the federal government had changed that. And a lot of people are used to just filing single zero or married zero. And it changed the deductions between the personal exemptions were eliminated. So a lot of people are confused with this. And they're only being provided, because I had my packet from when I got it, only the first two pages of the W2s and not the second, the finished two pages. So I would just ask that HR would provide the other two pages to the W4 and an explanation so that employees don't have large debt at the end of the year. Because some of them are still on the old way of doing the single zero, married zero thing, and it has a major effect on them at the end of the year, and they're not recognizing that. Thank you.
No other comments? On favor of the I, opposed say no, the I's have it, motion is carry. 8.2, Counselor Getchea requests city manager update the council on the crosswalk painting throughout the city for public safety, second by Counselor Musia. Any comment, Counselor Getchea?
Through you to the manager. We went over this with the past manager, and I'm just wondering, has there been any movement on the crosswalk painting? And is it going to get finished anytime soon?
Mr. Manager.
Through you, Mr. Mayor. Counselor, yes, the answer is yes on that. Currently, right now, our painting crews have been out. I believe they're in Counselor Scott's area right now, painting some of those areas. But we are also in the process of putting together an RFP to put it out on the street in the next seven days to see what possibly could happen for line striping throughout the city. So there are, we're attacking this at, I guess, from multiple, multiple points at this, at this time. And I'm hoping to have a full report probably by next Tuesday on that.
That update was fine for me. I just wanted to see if there was any progress on it. I don't really need a report unless anybody else in here really wants one. I just think that as long as it's moving forward. Thanks.
Any other comment on motion 8.2? Counselor Yem.
If I may add that, and I would like to see the word stop at the four-way stop in the major road because I was almost run over for a four-way stop at, between Wilder and Parker Street. The person did not see the sign just went by. So that would help reduce a lot of accidents. We have a lot of four-way stop. There's no word stop pending on the street. So while we do the crosswalk, would it be possible to just add the word stop, particularly the main road at this four-way stop? Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Counselor Yem, my understanding, that's a big change to the original intent of the motion. Ask the make of the motion, would you like to add that? Or you want Counselor Yem to have a separate motion?
I would think that we would have to follow the manual on traffic design before we can start painting those on the ground. So I think that I would just defer that to the manager and come up with a report on that, if it even fits within the manual on traffic design.
That makes sense, Counselor Yem. In addition to the report back on this motion, the manager will explore, investigate, see what the traffic design protocol would be to have the four-way stop sign painted as well. No other comment? On favor of the I, opposed say no, the I's have it, motion is carry. There was a motion earlier by Counselor Yem to bundle motion 8.3 and 8.4 together, second by Counselor Leahy. Counselor Yem, I do have good memory for bundling motions. So 8.3, Counselor Yem requests city manager have representative from National Grid provide an update to the council regarding their plan to erect a permanent fence at the National Grid site at the corner of School and Rock Street. Motion 8.4, Counselor Yem, Counselor Newn, request city manager direct property department raise the entering and exiting sign on School Street Bridge for the safety of children walking to and from the Stockloza Middle School. Any comment, Counselor Yem or Counselor Newn? Counselor Yem?
The fence at the, at the site of the National Grid present a real public safety. If you look at the picture, they have a concrete foot holding the fence. And I witnessed a young man coming down the bridge on School Street and then hit that cement foot on the fence and then crashed onto the sidewalk. And the crosswalk gentleman came over to assist him. This has been for, I believe, it's over two years now since they knocked down that building and they put up a temporary fence. And this is presenting the, the public safety issue for children, particularly travel to Stockloza School. And Counselor Newn and I, we also, at the end of that bridge coming down toward the school and Rock Street, there's a sign. And then I print the, the sign and put it on everybody's table. You see, it's so low that if you walk, you're not careful, you would hit your head or your face onto the sign. The manager, you have one on your desk as well that I put it on. So this way, it's a combination of both. And then if can be addressed, that would be great. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Counselor Newn.
I just want to add what Counselor Robinson added earlier to me, said to me that not only the sign is too low, but also almost right in the middle of the sidewalk. So he's talking about, you know, handicap, you know, people on wheelchairs and stuff that have to get off the road. So he made a great point. So anything we can do to fix it, that'd be great.
Counselor Robinson.
As Counselor Newn just mentioned, I mean, you can see there's a crosswalk right there, although it could use some updating. And with the ramp right next to the sign. So again, there's no way, just from the looks of this picture, that anyone in a wheelchair or, it's not ADA compliant. I mean, I don't even know how that passed, but thank you.
Any other comment? Hearing none, on the favor of the I, opposed say no, the I's have it, motion is carry. We did motion 8.5 already. We now go to motion 8.6. Counselor Newn requests city manager have DPD work with the CMAA and Cambodian Town Committee to install flags on the utility poles along Middlesex Street, second by Counselor Musia. Any comment, Counselor Newn?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. DPD and the city has been a great partner with CMAA, and they've been working on a number of projects already as we speak. The sidewalk on the Brent Street. So, you know, I hope that we add this to the discussion between the city, DPD Department, CMAA and Cambodian Town. And maybe they can all sit down and talk about how to take care of this. That's all.
Great motion. Counselor Yem.
I would like to add on, and it's a great motion, Counselor Newn. A few years back, when I was on the Cambodian Town, we had a meeting along with the DPD staff. There was a design of the word Cambodian Town with different arts and wording representing Cambodia, Cambodian culture. And I think it might be still somewhere, the DPD, the staff had been changed and stuff like that. But the design, we saw that it's beautiful. So maybe we can look into it and then put it back, particularly before the New Year start. But if we can put year-round, that would be great, at least. If not year-round, around April, Cambodian New Year's, in the Cambodian Town. Now that the courthouse, the redesign of the street will be finished, there's going to be a lot of traffic and tourists come to our city. And you would not believe, we met a good number of people from other states, you know, California, Washington State, Texas to come. And they say, we want to go to Cambodian Town. So that will be help, you know, generating more business revenue for the city of Lowell. So it's a tourist attraction. So thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Any other comments? Hearing none, on the favor of the I, opposed say no, the I's have it, motion is carry. Motion 8.7, Counselor Newn requests city manager list all qualifications for all department heads on the city website, second by Counselor Drinkwater. Any comment, Counselor Newn?
Motion speak for himself, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, Counselor, on favor of the I, opposed say no, the I's have it, motion is carry. Motion 8.8, Counselor Newn requests city manager work with property department to come up with a plan for bulky item disposal that will mitigate the illegal dumping that continues throughout the city, second by Counselor Rourke. Any comment, Counselor Newn?
I think the issues has been, has been an ongoing issues as well, that people dispose, you know, bulky item throughout the city. And, you know, earlier, your motion and Counselor Leahy motions, talking about the major cleanup throughout the city. I know now managers, you know, Golden have a lot of work ahead of him. So this just add on to, you know, what plan, you know, you, Mr. Managers, and your department have in term of mitigating some of the illegal dumping in the city. It'd go a long way. This has happened throughout the city, though.
Counselor Scott.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I did make a motion back in February that was asking for a bid option to include a bulky item pickup in the next RFP, which is until 2024. And Christine came back with the response on it that it expected the price to be about $750,000 a year to add three bulky pickup items a week. Now, we don't have to do three a week. It could be far less. But I think it's just something that we should definitely include, you know, in our discussions around the budget time and definitely around the next contract coming up. Thank you.
Any other comments? Hearing none, on the favor of the I, opposed say no, the I's have it, motion is carry. Motion 8.9, Counselor Newn, Counselor Drinkwater, request city manager work with HR department and city solicitor to provide the following information to the city council. One, the most recently completed wage and classification study. Second, the salary grid establishing tiers and steps for employees not covered by collective bargaining agreements. Last, and any movement of positions within salary tiers that occurred within the last 10 fiscal years. Any comment, Counselor Newn or Counselor Drinkwater?
Counselor Drinkwater.
Counselor Drinkwater.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. This motion just requests certain information, one being the most recently completed wage and classification study, which I recognize at this point will be dated. And we did recently appropriate money through the most recent free cash certification to complete a new wage and classification study, which I think will be very valuable to the city as we, you know, seek to make sure our compensation for employees is commensurate with what is required of them and what is being offered in other communities to be able to attract and retain talent. That being said, I know that, Mr. Manager, you will be tasked with filling other vacant positions, really without the benefit of an updated wage and class study because these positions need to be filled expeditiously and the study won't be completed. Our city code does give you the discretion to be able to make certain adjustments for employees that are not covered by collective bargaining. And that's discretion I certainly support to make sure that these important positions are being filled with qualified applicants and that their compensation matches the qualifications that are, that are necessary. I do just point out here that this discretion that the manager has to be able to make adjustments within the salary grid is something that the city council is supposed to exercise oversight over and approval of. It is my understanding that in past years, recently, that this approval occurs within the general appropriations budget, I believe, and I invite being corrected if I'm wrong here, but through the personnel salary list that's included within the budget. It lists the salary of every city employee. It's not always clear which positions are being adjusted within the salary grid. And I think it is important that if there are adjustments being made, that those are highlighted somehow so the council can just, you know, exercise our due diligence and make sure we understand what movement within the salary grid that we are approving. So, you know, just want to, want to highlight that as an issue. Make sure that the council is, you know, in receipt of the most up-to-date salary grid for employees not covered by collective bargaining. And, you know, I think it's also important, just because I know there most likely have been adjustments that have been made that, you know, councilors may not be necessarily aware of, that the motion response also include adjustments within that salary grid that have occurred within the last 10 years. So once again, you know, I certainly support your ability, Mr. Manager, to be able to make these adjustments, to surround yourself with people and department heads that, you know, are up to the task and, you know, that we're being competitive with other surrounding cities and towns. But just want to make sure that the council is also able to exercise our due diligence and aware of that. So thank you very much, Mr. Mayor.
Any other comments?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I just, you know, I echo everything being said about, on this motion that John Drink, that Counselor Drinkwater has mentioned. I think also this motion is going to look motion is going to look to address a couple of issues as well in term of recruitment and retention of qualified people. So, you know, we're looking forward to the report. And, you know, and from here on, you know, the goal is to, you know, to have cities that, you know, really, you know, recruit and retain qualified people and with the right position.
No other comments? On the favor of the eye, opposed, say no, the eyes have it, motions carry. Motion eight point ten, Councilor Drinkwater requests city manager direct the DPW to coordinate with Youth Sports League to adjust trash pickup schedule at city parks to account for increased usage of fields during spring and summer sessions, second by Councilor Robinson. Councilor Drinkwater?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. And I'm sure the budget transfer that was approved earlier in the agenda will help with this. But, you know, at the, right around this time of year, it happens where, you know, the city parks go from minimal use to an explosion of use, particularly with spring sports, you know, baseball opening days, and there's games happening throughout the day, soccer starting, and just with the nicer weather, people using parks. So I know a couple of weekends ago, as, you know, many of the baseball leagues were starting opening days, there was just, you know, an explosion of park usage. And it took a little bit of time to catch up with the additional trash pickup. I've noticed it's been a lot better since. But I just, you know, think it would be helpful, you know, just to have some coordination between the city and the various leagues. So, you know, if there's a particular day where fields are being used all day and, you know, the leagues are aware of that, there can just be some communication, you know, with the city to ensure that if an additional pickup is needed, that that can happen. And I'm sure the additional, over time, that was approved will certainly help, if there are extra pickups that are needed with the increased use. And we also have the, you know, the pools and splash pads coming on soon, too. So there'll be, I'm sure, a gradual uptick in use of the parks through the coming months. So, thank you very much, Mr. Mayor.
Councilor Robinson?
Thank you. Maybe this is something that could be accomplished in part with the permanent process, because there should be permits notifying activities going on in green space, I'd imagine. So maybe it's a matter of sending over so they can plan accordingly. It might be another component to help with this. In addition, I've heard from a couple leagues that they offered to do some kind of partnership with the city, if possible, and provide a lock dumpster to handle their own waste. So, again, I think we have options on the table. I think it's a matter of seeing how we can do that. Thank you.
Any other comments? Hearing none. On the favor of the eye, opposed, say no, the eyes have it, motions carry. Motion eight point eleven, Councilor Robinson requests city manager have property department provide a report on how to speed up process in dealing with abandoned vacant lots, i.e. Union Street, 33 Hildreth Street, Royal Street, and any other throughout the city, second by Councilor Rourke. Any comment, Councilor Robinson?
Yes, thank you. Again, this has been an ongoing problem. I don't understand what we can do to possibly speed this up. One of them, I looked into, and they hadn't paid taxes since 1993, I think it is. And the address on file is the actual abandoned lot. So it's, recently, I'd like to say thank you to our DPW. They went out at the request, I believe, of inspectional services, and they cleaned up the 33 Hildreth Street. But these are starting to pop up, and I guess they all have something similar in that the owner on file is located at these abandoned properties. So maybe through you, Mr. Mayor, to the solicitor, is there anything we can do to kind of empower you and the administration to kind of aggressively pursue this? Thank you.
Madam Solicitor?
Sure. The, a couple of things. Historically, the Department of Planning and Development has had periodic, quote, yard sale programs, where some of these smaller parcels are then publicly bid, and they're generally purchased by neighboring properties. The other, the other option that the law department had been exploring sort of pre-pandemic had to do with our tax title programs and our municipal, we have the municipal lien auction sales. The other thing we were looking to do is to scoop up all of the, all of the small parcels and disposing of them in a, in another manner. So we can put together a report about the different types of options that are available. And the manager's approval, I could reach out to DPD and have them weigh in on half of this report as well. So it would be a combination of tax title and DPD.
Thank you very much. And again, could we also include, another possible option is the Hildreth Street area, I know in particular, we have a church that's probably one building away. I've seen firsthand in different parts of the community, I think it's DIY Lowell, turns, transforms these abandoned areas that, I don't know if they can't be sold or what, but into community gardens. And that seems pretty successful as well. So again, anything we can do to kind of streamline this process and come back with some options, I'd appreciate it. Thank you.
Councilor Mousia?
Yes, thank you very much, Mr. Mayor. When I look at, this is a very good and important motion, because there's an opportunity to do something with this property. When you have empty land, next thing you know, there's dumping going on there. That's why we have the yard sale program, because maybe in today's standards, it's an unbuildable lot. So what they do is they divide it into two and offer it to each a butter. And therefore, they're paying taxes on the land, they're getting more property. And this particular property I could tell you about, because I remember in probably 1993, when I was wakened up by the sound of glass break, and this was the house across the street from where I lived. The lady had gone downstairs in the basement to do her laundry. And she put the clothes in the dryer, went back up on the second floor to go to sleep, and the dryer never shut off. And it overheated and overheated, caused a fire, burnt the house down. In fact, the police come over and firefighters had asked my husband to identify the body, and that was not something you want to see. But they have, have one son, and he could never be located, never heard from him again. So I'm sure he didn't pay any taxes on it. So what are we going to do? Leave it like that? Do we have to wait a certain amount of time for the property to be vacant? I would think if you haven't paid taxes within a number of years, then eminent domain tells you it's the city. So, I mean, it could become some valuable use to the both of butters. So that's a very good motion. This is things, little things like this mean a lot to spruce up the neighborhood, you know? So that's my comment on that. Thank you.
No other comments? On the favor of the eye, opposed, say no, the eyes have it, motions carry. Motion eight point twelve, Councilor Mousia requests city manager have parking director find ways and means to change two paving parking meters in front of 13 Heard Street, the Open Pantry, to two free 15-minute parking meters for clients picking up food, second by Councilor Yam. Councilor Mousia?
With the comments I just made previously about every dime counts, and here I am trying to change that to give some free parking. There is an organization at 13 Heard Street called the Open Pantry, where people who are struggling to put food on their table for their family can come and receive food. It never fails that once they come to pick up their, their food, the car is ticketed when they come out. These are the people that really can't afford much, and now they're going in to get free food. It's almost like they're paying for it, because they come out and their cars are ticketed. This organization, the Open Pantry, they provide a service to the city of Lowell, and their clients are being penalized, in my opinion. So in the spirit of compassion and cooperation, can we have the two meters in front of 13 Heard Street be changed to two 15-minute parking signs for the Open Pantry? I believe that, and I would like it to say, free 15-minute parking for Open Pantry only. I know when we tried to get some parking on Kirk Street, we said for clergy, because they were living on Kirk Street. It's not like free parking for anybody that can come over there. It's specifically for the clergy. This would be specifically for the Open Pantry. So that would make a difference. I think that you can put, designate who you, who the parking is for. And it's for the Open Pantry. They're providing a service for the city. So, thank you.
Good motion. Seeing no other hands. On the favor of the eye, opposed, say no, the eyes have it, motions carry. We already taken up motion eight point thirteen, the last two motions, mine, eight point fourteen, eight point fifteen. If there's no objection, unless, I think in the interest of time, Vice Mayor Gishir, if you don't mind, and no objection from the councilors. I just read the motions here, and I won't spend much time on it. Motion eight point fourteen, myself, request city manager have property department explore installing a four-way stop sign at the corner of High and East Merrimack Streets, second by Councilor Noon. This motion was brought to me by a very concerned resident, and I drove in that area myself many times. It is a lot of traffic, very dangerous, busy intersection, also very confusing. Councilor Leahy?
High and East Merrimack Street?
Correct.
Okay. It's technically a three-way, because it's one way going into, so just to correct it.
Thank you. And I hope, Mr. Manager, will figure that out when you visit the intersection. Any other comment? Hearing none. On the favor of the eye, opposed, say no, the eyes have it, motions carry. Motion eight point fifteen, myself, request city manager have property department place Highland Avenue and Power Street on the paving list.
Second.
Second by Councilor Leahy. And this is a clear-cut name of the streets, Councilor Leahy. Many, many roads deserve to be on the paving list, but these two streets have been, long been forgotten, and they're two of the main streets in the neighborhood. Councilor Gishir?
Highland Ave, I believe, is already on there. We talked about it a couple of weeks back, about the island's on it. I believe it's on for this year, I believe.
It's on it? Okay. Thank you. Any other comment? On the favor, say aye, opposed, say no, the eyes have it, motions carry. We're doing pretty good. Now we go to Councilor Gishir. I see the look on your face, something else you want to say? You ready for announcement? We are going to announcements. Nine announcements.
Thank you. I would like, I would like to take a moment and have the council remember Officer John Joseph Nguyen, who passed away 51 years ago today as a result of injuries sustained in the line of duty. Officer Nguyen was fifty-eight years old and had served 30 years in the Lowell Police Department.
Thank you, Councilor. Any other announcement? Councilor Mousia?
Yes, I'd like to announce that the city manager is still here despite the 38 motions. He stayed. Thank you so much. Great job.
Good, good point. Councilor Robinson?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I would just like to say, we recently had a second alarm fire in Sunnerville. I believe the address was 69 Fulton. And they are currently looking for any kind of help with clothing for the families. I believe it's two separate families that were displaced with children. I believe Sunnerville Neighborhood Group on Facebook is a good place to reach out to if you have any donations. You can see the list of clothing and sizes that the families are in need of. So, again, or you can reach out to myself, and I'll put you in contact with those that are collecting those. So, and again, it was, I'd like to thank the fire department responded in a very timely manner in a very congested area. And luckily, there was, everyone was out, material items were lost, but everyone's life was saved. So, thank you.
Any other announcement? Councilor Yam?
Just want to congratulate the CFO Baldwin and his staff for get the recognition from the, or the Government of Finance Officers Association of the United States and Canada. Good job. And eight years in a row, we, Mr. Baldwin and his team, you know, received this recognition. So, good job, and thank you for your hard work. Also, the last, on behalf of the entire council, the mayor, and the new city manager, we want to wish Councilor Noon an early birthday. Happy birthday, Ms. Councilor Noon. Next Monday is his birthday.
Okay. Mr. Manager?
Thank you very much, Mr. Mayor, and through you to the members. There's an ARPA hearing, just to let everybody know. Hopefully, it's in your packet on May 11th at 6:00 p.m. at the Greater Lowell YMCA. So hopefully, everyone's going to have an opportunity to take part in that.
Thank you. I just want a quick announcement. Myself, this Friday, the Asian Caucus, state representatives and senators who are of AAPI descendants, they're coming to Lowell, not to visit their former colleague, but to have the AAPI Unity Dinner. They're coordinated by the Middlesex Community College. And on behalf of the President Phil Sessin and the mayor's office, we would like to invite all the council members, the school committee members, and any public who are interested in joining the AAPI Unity Dinner, to contact my office, the Middlesex Community College office, or the Asian American, the AAPI, the Asian American Commission in Boston. Thank you. Ten adjournment, motion by Councilor Janess, second by Councilor Leahy. To adjourn, on the favor of the eye, opposed, say no, the eyes have it, motion is carry. And we did not do too bad.